Good evening and welcome to the May 3, 2016 Pickwa City Commission Meeting. I now call us to order and let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
Here. And we start with our announcements this evening, and the first is a proclamation for the Bike to School Week, so I'd like to invite those here for that proclamation to come forward. It is wonderful to have our Bike Pickwa enthusiasts here tonight as we read this proclamation for Bike to Work Week and also Bike Month this month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and as a quality family recreation activity, and whereas Pickwa hosts events such as the annual Bike Blessing, Bicycle Rodeo, Bike to Work and Bike to School Week, Pickwa Bike Challenge, Moonlight Stride and Rides, and the Groovy Gourd Bike Tour encourages local and visiting bicyclists to enjoy the Great Miami recreational trail, the Pickwa recreational trail system, and all of our beautiful community. Whereas these bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on Pickwa's economy and tourism industry and to stimulate economic development by making the city attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists and local advocacy organizations like Bike Pickwa are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas the citizens of Pickwa benefit from the availability of a complete transportation system that includes facilities dedicated to the safe and convenient movement of bicycle traffic. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Pickwa Commission hereby proclaims the month of May as Bike Month and the week of May 2, 2016 to May 6, 2016 as Bike to Work and Bike to School Week in Pickwa, Ohio. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you all very much. Do we have any other public announcements this evening?
Good evening. God is good, and I'm thankful to be standing before you this evening. My name is Larry Hamilton, and I am a resident of the City of Pickwa. Tonight I have a follow-up announcement to the Memorial Day celebration I made two weeks ago in coming before the Commission. At that time, I invited the mayor to deliver a proclamation at our church anniversary on May 1. The mayor unable to attend on the 1st graced us with the delivery of the proclamation at our Tuesday evening Bible study. The mayor wrote a column that appeared in the Pickwa Daily Call the day before our observance, and unfortunately missed the opportunity to show some love, to greater love, in an article titled "More Than Just Pickwa." Hopefully, the proclamation will be reflective of a more just Pickwa in the realm of an inclusive historical heritage. I also wish to encourage City Manager Huff, who shared some of the same ideas that I have long expressed in my personal vision for Pickwa, when he wrote in his State of the City address without a vision for the community. The community will never improve or advance. That's the importance of the vision, and the overall community vision for Pickwa is to make it a quality place. Gary, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I also used the occasion of making the announcement to share a memorandum of understanding relating to some positive and constructive community initiatives in line with what I refer to as my personal vision for Pickwa and doing the right thing. Because of those efforts, I was making an outreach to the friends of the Johnston Farm to make a notable and highly visible display of what I refer to as ownership/identity space for the Randolph or Freedman's struggle narrative at the Johnston Farm. I pledged a $10,846 donation that would be tied to that purpose. Today, I come before the Commission to announce a second journey or pilgrimage to the sites of importance connected to the arrival and experiences of the Randolph Freedmen in 1846, and invite the leadership of Pickwa, the mayor, the city manager, the city commission, to join me and the Pride organization in a show of unity in the community in support of a travelogue of destiny from Pickwa to New Bremen and Carthagena in Mercer County. The day will be Saturday, May 14, and at 10:00 a.m. we will gather at the roadside park on Route 66 across from the Water Works and adjoining the Great Miami River Canal Corridor to the Johnston Farm and Cemetery. A historical interlude and devotional sharing by clergy will take place at each site visited. All drivers and participants must observe the road laws of the state of Ohio and appropriate decorum at each site that each site is visited. Thank you for the opportunity to make this announcement this evening.
Thank you, Larry. Any other announcements this evening? If not, we move on to our Resident Pride Awards. Do I just name them? Okay, so the first Resident Pride Award goes to Jake and Pam Kennedy, 1906 Carlisle Drive, and the second one to Jim and Jessie Hess, 707 Clark Avenue, and the third to Jim and Linda Blaze at 1223 Marwood Drive, and the fourth to Michael and Morgan Moore at 704 West Green Street, and finally, the fifth one to Lori Nicodemus at 1062 North Street. We do appreciate these residents showing good community pride in their property here in our city. They are a good example for the rest of us to follow. And now, I need a motion to move into executive session to consider the sale of property for public purpose. Oh, we have a time.
I missed the open announcements to help unlock a friend that forgot their bike lock.
Okay.
So excuse me. I just wanted to let you know Jeff Lang, 9586 North State Route 66. On April 16, I sent an email to all of you going over our results for the 12th Annual Fall Sweep of the Pickwa Hydraulic Canal, Echo Lake, Swift Run, and France Pond, where Powell volunteers on the 25th of October netted 85 pounds of trash. And then again, on April 16 of this last month, we got 120 pounds of trash out of our local waters. The 13th Annual Powell Clean Sweep of the Great Miami River will be July 16. If you would all go to www.protectingourwaterways, no hyphen between water and ways, just continuous.org to sign up via email, I will call you and let you know what you're getting into. Commissioner Wilson knows what he's getting into because he's been there almost every year for me. To put it in final tallies, that's 148,200 pounds of trash in 12 years, including 1,400 tires and 8,800 community man-hours worked. So please, join us for this year for our 13th Annual Clean Sweep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Another great example of citizen pride here in our community, the good work that you all do keeping our water clean. Thank you.
My question is, what would it look like if we had never taken that out?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I believe that we did have a motion to move to executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
So we will now move to executive session.
the public service of Chris Worst as a city employee. Chris is not able to be with us tonight, but he has 30 years of service at the water treatment plant and has been a dedicated employee, and we will certainly miss his experience.
I move we approve the consent agenda? Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, consent agenda stands then. Moving on to our new business, the first thing we have is ordinance number 4-16. This is our second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 51 of the Pickwa Municipal Code Sewers.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This is a routine audit at our wastewater plant, and as a result, the report came back making the recommendation that our code have some minor changes. All those changes are on Page 4 of your ordinance, and those changes would make our code compliant and consistent with the Ohio Administrative Code.
Any questions from the Commission? Do we have any comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as our second reading of this ordinance. And now we move on to ordinance number 5-16. This is also a second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the submission of a proposed amendment to the Pickwa Charter Section 4 of the Commission.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This ordinance seeks to amend our charter for purposes of executive session. The Ohio Revised Code has changed to expand the reasons you can enter executive session, so this charter amendment would make it consistent with the state law. It also has a section so that you wouldn't have to keep coming back to amend the charter to allow, as the Ohio Revised Code Section amends through the state legislature, it would also apply if that specific amendment was for municipalities. Once you approve this ordinance, if that's your choosing, it would go to the voters for their approval in November.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commission on this ordinance? Do we have any comment from the public? If not, this will stand as our second reading of ordinance number 5-16. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-59-16.
A resolution awarding a contract to Speedway LLC for our citywide fuel purchasing program for the years, excuse me, for the years 7-1 through 16 through 6/30/19.
I'll call on Ms. Holtzapple to provide tonight's staff report.
Thank you. Our current fuel contract will be ending at the end of June of this year. We went out for bid properly advertising, and bids were open on March 23 of 2016. We received two bids, one from Speedway LLC and High Towers Petroleum. As is noted in your package, the bid documents are Exhibit A. The High Tower locations were reviewed and are currently not feasible, as the majority of these locations are located to the south of the city, with only one being on Clark Avenue. In addition, many of our maintenance and power trucks would not be able to access the fuel at those locations because of the height of those fuel tanks. In addition, Speedway, while they have multiple locations throughout the city, they also have multiple locations throughout the state, which enables the city vehicles to travel when they are traveling outside of the city. We currently are using Speedway as our contract, and we're highly satisfied with the service we've been provided. In addition, our current contract, our cost is about eight cents over the wholesale cost. This equates to about six or seven cents less than what the general public is receiving or paying at the pump. The bid that came in for the new three-year contract is even better, with it being just five cents over the wholesale cost. Therefore, we are recommending that we enter into a multiple-year contract with Speedway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? If not, do we have any comment from the public? Well, let's have a roll call vote on this one.
I need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, that's right. Let's have a motion first.
So moved.
Second.
Now let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And now we move on to Resolution Number R-60-16.
A resolution awarding a contract to Walz Brothers Asphalt Company for the 2016 street resurfacing program.
Ms. Haverne will provide the first of eight staff reports.
Thank you, I'll talk fast. This legislation would allow us to hire Walz Brothers Asphalt for our 16 paving program. The list of streets is in your packet. This will also include doing pavement repairs for areas that are considered bad. We'll be putting a new asphalt surface course down, and also all new pavement markings within the streets being resurfaced. We've used Walz a handful of times in the past, and they're a very good company, and they'll do us a fine job. They anticipate starting mid and June at this point, but they are trying to get a milling machine scheduled, so it will be dependent upon that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Commission on this resolution?
I think you might want to note that our city crews will be paving other streets as well, plus some other federal paving as well, so this isn't the entire list of the streets, this is just a portion.
Correct. ODOT will be paving State Route 185 that we have a portion in, and then our Public Works Department has multiple areas that they will be resurfacing and providing maintenance on as well.
That's a good point, because I've had some calls about some alleys recently as well, and I know we have addressed that.
Well, I should admit that we are working alleys right now. We're waiting on our new milling machine to come in, so while we're waiting for that to occur, we're going ahead and doing alleys, so they're working a lot of alleys at this point.
Any other questions from the Commission? Any comments from the public on this resolution? And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-60-16?
Approve Resolution Number R-60-16.
Second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-60-16 stands. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-61-16.
A resolution granting utility easement to Vectren Energy Delivery of Ohio for the parcel number N44001800.
The next three items are in regards to Vectren when they completed their Bear Steel/Cast Iron program in 2012. They had a need to access a portion of the city property, all within parking lots, and at the time they were doing the work, we granted them a right-of-entry agreement. This will be just coming back and actually cleaning that up to make it an actual easement. As I said, the next three are related to that. One of them, the first one we're looking at is the parking lot behind the Fort Pickwa Plaza, and then the next two are the parking lot behind Hallmark and the parking lot between Main and Wayne adjacent to our bike path.
Any questions from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions from the public? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-61-16?
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-61-16 stands. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-62-16.
A resolution granting a utility easement to Vectren Energy Delivery of Ohio for parcel number N44250040 and N442500039.
This is similar again, this is for granting Vectren an easement for the public parking lot located behind the Hallmark store.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission? Any questions from the public?
I got a question.
Yes.
Does that run down through the alley? Or the driveway that you go behind the plaza?
This one is behind the Hallmark store.
Oh, Hallmark store.
The one behind the plaza actually is close to Thomas.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. That's another block.
I move to adopt Resolution R-62-16.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-62-16 stands. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-63-16.
A resolution granting a utility easement to Vectren Energy Delivery of Ohio for parcel number N44250351.
This would be for the portion of the property, which is our parking lot between Main Street and Wayne Street adjacent to our bike path in the asphalt.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission? Any questions from our public on this?
I move to adopt Resolution R-63-16.
Second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-61-16 stands.
63-16.
63-16 stands, sorry. And now we are on Resolution Number R-64-16.
A resolution granting temporary and permanent utility easements to the Vectren Energy Delivery of Ohio for parcel number N44250135.
This one is different. This one references Vectren's Transmission Modernization Project, which they are going to be working on. They approached the city about needing an easement. This is off of Sunset. It's where our existing water tower used to be, and we have a substation in this area. It's also in part of what was Propeller Place. This one, they need a permanent easement, fairly large in size, as well as temporary easements, to construct their improvements. So this one would be granting both permanent and temporary, however, they would be paying us for these easements at a cost of $7,530.
Any questions from the Commission?
Yeah, is all of this on city property?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, they are getting easements from Hartzell and numerous other people throughout the city, but what we are voting on tonight would just be the portion for the city.
Okay, right.
Anything else from the Commission? Anything from the public on this resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution R-64-16.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-64-16 stands. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-65-16.
A resolution requesting authorization to purchase the real property located on Wood Street, part of Miami County Current Tax Parcel Number N44250606, being owned by the Transformed Life Church.
As part of our Commercial Street/Garnsey Street Neighborhood Connector Project, we're negotiating right-of-way and easements necessary for the project, and as we were looking at this parcel, the location that we want to put the bike path, we realized it would sever the property owned by Transformed Life Church. So as part of that, the right-of-way consultant looks at the use of the property and what's remaining after the right-of-way, and there are two parcels that are small in nature. Together, they're .2 acres. They are actually going to be to the east of our proposed bike path and to the west of Roosevelt Avenue that will be unusable to the church. And in negotiations with Pastor Brian Hamilton, he had requested that possibly the city just go ahead and purchase those, because they basically have no use to the church at this point. So that's what this legislation would be for, is to purchase both of those properties for a cost not to exceed $6,500.
Any questions from the Commission? Any questions from the public on this resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution R-65-16. Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-65-16 stands. And now moving on to Resolution Number R-66-16.
A resolution requesting authorization to acquire a permanent and temporary easement located on Wood Street, part of Miami County Current Tax Parcel Number N44250563, being owned by the Transformed Life Church.
This again is for the Garnsey Street/Commercial Street Neighborhood Connector Project. This would just be a permanent and a temporary easement for the proposed multi-use path. The temporary easement would be for during construction, and the permanent easement would be where the bike path will be going. This would be at a cost not to exceed $5,384, and again, this property is owned by the Transformed Life Church.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions from the public?
Move to adopt Resolution R-66-16.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-66-16 stands. And now we move to Resolution Number R-67-16.
A resolution requesting authorization to acquire a permanent and temporary easement located on Wood Street, part of the Miami County Current Tax Parcel Number N44250606 and N44250564, being owned by the Transformed Life Church.
This is for the same project, it's just a different parcel number that the church owns, so we're bringing this to you separate. Again, this is for a temporary and a permanent easement for the multi-use path. This one has a cost not to exceed $22,280.
Any questions from the Commission? Any questions from the public? If not, do we have a motion to accept Resolution Number R-67-16?
So moved.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner, excuse me, Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-67-16 stands. And now we move to the time for a public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? If not, we'll move to the City Manager's report.
Thank you very much. We had six classes from Washington Primary School here today. They have been studying local government, and today came in and used the Commission Chambers to conduct mock City Commission meetings, and I was impressed. They had scripts, and they had it down pretty pat, so I think we have a, probably a really good future for some elected officials in the future years, so they did really well. So it was fun being with them, and they really appreciated, enjoyed the microphones very much.
[laughter]
A big thanks to our development program manager, Nikki Reese. We've recently been awarded two grants from the Pickwa Community Foundation of $1,750 for home repairs for our help program, and also $3,158 for purchasing additional AEDs that will be placed at the Pittsburgh Park concession stand. So, great job as usual with Nikki. May 1st to 7th is National Drinking Water Week, and also, National Public Service Recognition Week, and I believe it's also National Small Business Week. So those are three things that we appreciate very much. We enjoy having the great water provided to us. Of course, we're very appreciative of the public servants that we have within the city, and of course, we're very appreciative of our small businesses that we have, because we have some great businesses. So wanted to recognize them with that tonight. May 5th is National Day of Prayer, and the Pickwa Association of Churches will hold a prayer vigil at noon at the fountain in front of the Municipal Government Center, and I think that's on a Thursday, May 5th, so they invite everyone to attend. And then on Saturday, May 7th, is our Community Cleanup Day, and we encourage organizations, schools, businesses, families, and individuals to participate by picking up trash and debris throughout the community. And we ask that you call the Health and Sanitation Department at 778-2060 to register for your participation, so we'll know who's out there doing things, and can help assign groups or individuals to certain areas that need cleanup. So we've got a busy week coming up, and a lot of activities as usual, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Oh, one thing I forgot, is that we started announcing the different types of citizen engagement and involvement programs, and last week, we talked about, the last meeting, we talked about the Adopta Program. This week, I just wanted to mention our Pickwa Alert Program, in which it provides email notifications on a variety of information from the city, including emergency situations, emergency repairs. For instance, if we have water, sewer line breaks, or street maintenance going on, those type of scheduled repairs, police reports, the commission's agendas, meetings, blogs, and a lot of other information. And you can actually get involved by signing up for Pickwa Alert and receiving all that information, and you can do that directly from our website. So each week, we're announcing, each meeting, I should say, we're announcing one of those type of programs that will help you get involved and become more engaged within the city. That does conclude my comments.
Great, thank you. Well, we'll start down at the end with Commissioner Wilson. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I wanted to just add a little bit on the Pickwa Community Cleanup Day. It is Saturday, roughly 8:30 to about noon, and it's not much involved. You just maybe pick up trash, pull some weeds, clip some bushes, whatever. And if, albeit the corner of Green and Wayne, so if you drive by, honk or yell or whatever you want to do, but we'll be out. Supposed to be beautiful weather, 70-some degrees sunny, so hopefully, other people will join us. I think we're going to meet initially behind the city building at 8:30, so if you have an interest in helping us out, give them a call, and we'll take your name. That's all.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Terry?
I just wanted to mention that there is a rain date for Arbor Day on May 5th at 10 o'clock out at Edison, and the children in the preschool program are going to help the city workers plant a tree. That's always a nice program for Arbor Day. We got rained on last week, so hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and we'll get it done this week. And also, I'm thinking about the Cleanup Day, too. We're out walking every day in the neighborhood, it's part of my rehab, and I'm looking in the gutters and seeing all the stuff. And if every property owner would take your broom and your dustpan and just get out and clean your own gutters, pull some weeds, and clean the gutters right in front of your house, and the people who live near the catch basins, if they wouldn't mind cleaning those, all that stuff wouldn't go down the catch basins. And it certainly makes a lot nicer-looking neighborhood.
And actually, you can adopt a catch basin of all things, so.
You can adopt anything.
You can adopt about anything, but the catch basins are, you know, something you can go for.
Will they put our name on them, on a sign like yours?
Well, I don't know about that, but you can have the good feeling of adopting one once your back's up to it.
Well, maybe I'll just do that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Vogt?
Well, before the meeting, Joe and I was talking about the grass in the streets, the people blowing their clippings into the streets, and we wanted to ask Stacy if there's any kind of legislation we can get for that. There's some communities that have that legislation.
Currently, we don't, so I'll look into it for you.
Yeah.
And congratulate the resident pride winners, they have very nice houses, they do a good job. And Mr. Worst, congratulate him, and happy retirement. And that's all I have, thank you.
Nothing tonight? I'm going to keep it simple, nothing tonight?
Oh, nothing, that's it? Oh, nothing, okay, all right. I have had quite a few people call me, and I received a letter this past week about some issues in the city. We did talk about, I've had people call me about some street issues, and we have let folks know, the street department, about those, whether they're alleys or roads that people have called me about. I've also had some, from some people who are concerned about houses in different parts of town, houses that might be vacant. As we have mentioned before, we are in the process of hiring a code enforcement person that will address some of those issues and help us kind of stay on top of that. And so I want you to know that whoever it was that did send me this letter, that we are looking into those houses that you brought to our attention, and we do appreciate that. Also, I just want to mention and give a shout-out to Brandon Sane. He did his second football camp this past weekend, and there were over 125 kids that were part of that, and we just give thanks to Brandon in the ways that he continues to give back to his hometown community. Also, another congratulations to our men's chorus and Tom Westfall. They won state competition this past weekend, which is a great way of showing Pickwa pride, and we give thanks for their wonderful musical ability and celebrate with them that wonderful honor. Also, the Run Club that I have been working with at Pickwa Central Intermediate School had their final 5K this past Sunday to benefit the cross-country team, so I want to give a shout-out to all those sixth graders and the teachers that were part of that Run Club. It was an excellent, excellent opportunity for our kids to get moving and get physically fit here in our community, and to be wonderful role models for the rest of us. Also, as Gary mentioned, it is Public Service Recognition Week, and I give thanks for the good employees that we have here in the city of Pickwa. We are very fortunate, and you are appreciated, so thank you for all you do for our city. Also, it is Melanoma Skin Cancer Detection and Prevention Month, and I did do a proclamation for that, which you can see on my blog. Also, I want to let you know that there are free screenings for skin cancer at Upper Valley Medical Center on the 12th of May from 1 to 4, and you can call 866-608-3463 to schedule those if you want to have one of the free screenings. Again, I remind you about my blog, and also, a show on WOTVC called Eye on the City. It's a way that I want to get to citizens, a little bit about what's going on in our community, and some of the good things that are happening here in Pickwa. Also, I want, I'm introducing walks with the mayor, and my, what I plan to do is to take walks with different city officials, and different commissioners, and different neighborhoods, and the first one will happen in the Shawnee neighborhood, where I, along with John Martin, and our Public Works, Brian Brookart, and Doug Harder, and Devin Alexander, the stormwater person, will be walking with us. And the first one will happen there on May 16th from 6 to 8. So I invite all the residents of the Shawnee neighborhood, and anybody else in the city that wants to come and join us to ask questions, to walk through the community, to give us all eyes and ears as to what are the needs in that community, and that part of our community especially. And that is all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Second.
Let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
You sound like you don't want to.
Commissioner Martin?
We're having so much fun!
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.